I'd like to ask everybody to please remember to silence your electronic devices. And if you would, please stand and join me in the invocation and the pledge. Lord, as we begin our meeting tonight, we thank you for your many blessings and pray for all those in our city who are sick or suffering. We ask your blessings upon our nation and pray that elected officials at all levels of government find ways to work together for the common good of all. Grant us wisdom here tonight as we exercise the freedoms that so many have sacrificed to defend. Although we may be of different creeds, we ask all this as one community united in the bonds of friendship. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, everybody. It's great to see this many people here. Wow, we should put all of your presentations at the end of the meeting so that you have to stay. So I do want to welcome a recent former council member and former vice mayor Sherri Donahue to the meeting. And, yes. Sherri, you are missed, and we could scoot up another chair here if you want. So it must be kind of weird for you to sit on that side of the dais, but welcome. All right, so the Fernandez Fun Historical Fact tonight will be presented by Council Member Abel.
My fun fact for this evening is that in 1963, Temple Terrace was declared a bird sanctuary. And this ordinance prohibited the trapping, hunting, killing, or maiming of birds, provided for destruction and/or means of eliminating nuisance birds, and provided for punishment for a violation thereof. The punishment was a $100 fine if you bothered birds. And I don't know if this is still in effect today, but maybe our city attorney could tell us at some point if anyone wants to know. But I will say that, I don't know how long ago it was, maybe 15 or 20 years ago, a flock of parrots escaped from bush gardens in the aftermath of a hurricane. And you can still see them flying over the city. It's this herd of, not herd, flock of green. And I guess they're protected too, so let's leave those parrots alone.
Very good, thank you. It's interesting that you mentioned that because I was watching a movie with my family recently. I won't tell you which one because it'll date me, but in the movie, one of the characters was jumping up and down with excitement because he saw a blue heron. And this was like, he was a bird spotter, and this was like his 19th million species that he spotted a new species. And I'm thinking, I got blue heron in my front yard. So apparently it worked. So, very good. We have a couple of presentations tonight. One is by the Florida League of Cities. And we have Florida League of Cities Executive Director Linda Bridges and the Florida Association of City Clerks President Angie Guy are both here to present. Would you like to come to the podium, please? Welcome, ladies. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and make this presentation. As your mayor said, I am Angie Guy, FACC's current president, and we are here for a couple of resolutions to honor your city clerk and your city. And this is Linda Bridges. We also have Lori Hillman from Zephyr Hills, Andrea Calvert from St. Leo, Sharon Lothar from Hayne City, Dawn Wright, sorry, from Eagle Lake, and Kelly Koo's former, oh, sorry, I didn't know you were coming, Rosemarie. Kelly Koo's former FACC president, and she's the city clerk in Lakeland. And Rosemarie Call, she is our current district director for our district. So first, I'm going to read the resolution to honor your city clerk Cheryl Mooney. Resolution number 2023-58, a resolution of the Florida Association of City Clerks expressing appreciation and gratitude for service and dedication to city clerk Cheryl Mooney. MPA, MMC, city clerk to the city of Temple Terrace and president of the Florida Association of City Clerks. Whereas Cheryl A. Mooney, MPA, MMC, city clerk for the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, has served as president of the Florida Association of City Clerks, FACC, during the 2022-2023 year. And whereas Cheryl A. Mooney, MPA, MMC, worked diligently and held herself to the highest standards, serving the membership of FACC in her capacity as president. And whereas Cheryl A. Mooney, MPA, MMC, has carried out the duties and responsibilities in her capacity, serving as president of FACC and city clerk for the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, sharing her knowledge and expertise. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Florida Association of City Clerks that, Section 1, that FAC membership and staff recognize and sincerely thank Cheryl A. Mooney, MPA, MMC, for her dedication and professionalism in representing FACC as president, while continuing to serve the city of Temple Terrace, Florida. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption and authentication by the signatures of the president-elect and the immediate past president, adopted and approved by the Florida Association of City Clerks at a meeting held the 19th day of June 2023. Signed, Angie Guy, MMC, president-elect, Florida Association of City Clerks, city clerk for the city of Dade City, Florida, and Stacy Johnston, MMC, immediate past president, Florida Association of City Clerks, for the city of Holmes Beach. Cheryl, from the bottom of our heart, we thank you for everything that you did for FACC. You're more than just our president, you are a great colleague and a friend, and we thank you for everything that you did.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Do we have to take pictures? Do you want to do pictures together with everything at once, or do you want to do? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. The next one is for the city of Temple Terrace. Resolution 2023-59, a resolution of the Florida Association of City Clerks expressing appreciation to the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, for supporting the role of city clerk Cheryl A. Mooney, MPA, MMC, president of the Florida Association of City Clerks, and expressing gratitude to the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, for generously sharing Cheryl Mooney's time with the Florida Association of City Clerks' membership. Whereas Cheryl A. Mooney, MPA, MMC, city clerk for the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, has served as president of the Florida Association of City Clerks, FACC, during 2022-2023. And whereas the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, has been most understanding of the demands placed on Cheryl A. Mooney, MPA, MMC, in her capacity as president. And whereas the membership of FACC is most grateful to the city of Temple Terrace for their flexibility with Cheryl Mooney's absences away from the city, which allowed her to active, excuse me, allowed her active participation and unselfish service and efforts to successfully promote the programs, projects, philosophy of FACC during the past fiscal year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Florida Association of City Clerks that, Section 1, the FACC membership and staff recognize and sincerely thank the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, for granting Cheryl A. Mooney, MPA, MMC, the flexibility to be the active president of FACC while continuing to serve as a city clerk for the city of Temple Terrace, Florida. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption and authentication by the signatures of the president-elect and immediate past president, adopted and approved by the Florida Association of City Clerks at a meeting held this 19th day of June 2023. Signed, Angie Guy, MMC, president-elect, Florida Association of City Clerks, the city of Dade City, Stacy Johnston, MMC, immediate past president, Florida Association of City Clerks, city of Holmes Beach, Florida. And again, thank you very much for sharing Cheryl with us. We appreciate the time that she was allowed to be away from us, and we're all better for it.
Good, thank you. Cheryl?
I just want to thank Linda for your help during the past year, and my FACC colleagues, thank you all for being here and for your support as well. And I want to thank my staff for stepping up and helping me in my time of need. So thank you all.
And we really would appreciate getting a picture with the resolutions with each of you and Cheryl.
I think that would work. So, how are we going to do this? Because you have quite a big group, too.
It's up to you, however it works.
Well, why don't we get one with all of us, and then we'll get one with all of you.
And Angie is the current president of FACC. You have to be in the middle. Yes, she needs it. I'll let you, Mayor, hold that one.
Sure, how many people we were talking?
If I may get one for the association information that will go out this week to show everyone this presentation. Thank you.
Cheryl, now.
We want you to.
Maybe I can get someone else to do it.
Thank you.
Oh, Shirley started to go down. They're not strong enough for that.
I feel like I'm at somebody else's party.
I'm going to go sooner.
Now we look at Brian.
One, two, three.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, sweetie.
Thank you.
Linda came all the way down from Tallahassee today.
It's an honor to do it.
What's the drive?
I'm fixing to do it again, Mayor.
I make that drive, I know.
So please excuse me while I get on the road.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye now. Drive safe.
Thank you all.
Before we move on, Cheryl, I just do want to say that on behalf of the council, we do appreciate you doing this. It's a, it's a big undertaking, and I don't know if our residents completely understand the benefits to the city for our employees that are active participants in professional organizations such as the city clerks, or whether it's the Police Chiefs Association, or the Fire Chiefs, or any number of different organizations. But that has a direct benefit to the city as well, because I will tell you, they all come back with things that they pick up from their colleagues across the state and across the country. And I can't tell you how many times that Cheryl, over the last year, has said, hey, I got this idea about this, or about that. And so, thank you for doing that. And thank you, Jen's gone, the deputy city clerk for picking up the slack you mentioned. And so, I wish she were still here, but in any event, thanks to her too. So, very good. Our next presentation is by the executive director of the Transportation Planning Organization, Beth Alden. And she is here to discuss with us the MPO merger concept, which I know I have kind of briefed you on, although that's a quickly evolving, a moving target. So Beth is here to give you more detail and more current information. Welcome.
Thank you so much, and thank you for giving me some time on your agenda this evening. And thank you also for loaning Mayor Ross to us on a monthly basis. We've been very lucky to have him serving as our vice chair of the Hillsborough Transportation Planning Organization this past year. And I know you know what a great leader he is, and he's a great leader for us, too. So thank you for that. We have news to talk about with you. I'm here to get feedback from you all about a change that we are going to be evaluating. And it's one of those situations where everything changes, but if we work together, this can be a change that's positive for our community. So let's talk about what the, what the concept is. I'm going to start out for our audience with what is an MPO, a Metropolitan Planning Organization? It's a generic term. In our area, we call it a transportation planning organization, but it's the same thing. And it is a policy board of local officials who represent a metropolitan area. This board sets priorities for collaborative investments in significant transportation projects. And that's really the fundamental part. It's, we all have limited resources. How do we work together to allocate those resources to the highest priorities for our communities working together in a metropolitan area? We do have three POs serving the tri-county area of Tampa Bay. Transportation management area is a federal term. It comes out of the census. It means an area that has more than 200,000 people. There are then federal rules for how you do transportation planning for this area. The federal rules do allow there to be more than one MPO serving a transportation management area, but they do have to coordinate with each other. And that's what we've been doing for several decades, ever since this, this TMA was designated across Hillsborough, Pinellas, and Pasco counties. In 2023, the Florida Legislature passed a bill that directs us, the three POs serving these three counties, to prepare a report to the Florida Legislature exploring the potential for merging, specifically identifying benefits, costs, and process of consolidation into a single MPO, serving that tri-county area, looking at regionally significant transportation projects, coordinating that with land use decisions, and coordinating both in the long-range planning and the five-year transportation improvement programs. So there's been a lot of talk about, you know, about merging the POs over the years. There's been more than one study in the past. This isn't really new. Some of the things that we have heard over the years, pros and cons, pros of merging would include potentially greater collaboration among the three counties, maybe bringing together spokespeople, leaders from different sides of the aisle, who can speak to a number of different audiences at the federal level and at the state level to advocate for funding for the projects which are important to this metropolitan area. And that's what compete more effectively with other regions for funding, kind of refers to also. We've heard over and over again that the tri-county MPO that serves the Orlando-area Metro Plan has been able to bring diverse folks together and successfully advocate for funding for major transportation projects there. We have, also had the opportunity to work with regional economic development initiatives and make sure that those transportation investments are aligned there. And heck, if we get together, we're actually the largest MPO in the state of Florida by population. We're actually larger than the tri-county Orlando area if we work together. Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach are also part of one transportation management area, but they are three separate POs. So we'd be bigger, eh, larger than they are. Cons, so what happens to cities like Temple Terrace, who have had a voting seat on their transportation planning organization board for all of these years? There is a limit on the size of the board under Florida law of 25. There is also a requirement under Florida law that voting seats are allocated proportional to population. There's a little bit of wiggle room, room for interpretation there, but that's what the law says. So, you know, it might be that cities the size of Temple Terrace don't have a direct seat on the board anymore. There are ways that other large POs have dealt with that situation. One, for example, Metro Plan Orlando has created a small cities council, which then elects one representative to serve on the MPO board. But there are other strategies, too. Another con, it doesn't necessarily guarantee that there's any more funding. A lot of the federal funding that comes to this area is distributed based on formula, based on population. I mean, there are, right now, some discretionary grants at the federal level that people are advocating for. That is, you know, under a bill that covers five years. Hasn't always been that way in the past. Not sure if that's always going to be that way in the future. You know, during this five-year period, if we had a tri-county MPO, it might give us a leg up in advocating for some of those discretionary funds. I don't know if we can merge that fast, to be honest. If we really want to work together for advocate, for the, to advocate for those funds, we should be doing that right now. There's a concern that this could shift the emphasis to big highway projects, rather than focusing on some of the safety needs and the community needs, you know, within Temple Terrace. We've been focusing on safety and state of good repair in our TPO priority list for some time. So how will that play out at the regional level once we start having that same conversation with Pasco County, for example, which is very focused on getting its commuters to job centers in Hillsborough? And there's a question about, will this weaken coordination between land use and transportation? Land use decisions, as you know, happen at the local level. Right now, your TPO is housed and staffed by the same agency that drafts your comprehensive plan, working with your Temple Terrace city staff. And so there's a lot of synergy and coordination that happens right there. Opportunities for public engagement are also something that's, that folks have been concerned about. So there are a lot of details that obviously need to be addressed. And so our TPO has been looking, considering, signing a memorandum of understanding with the other two POs that lays out the framework and the guiding principles for how decisions will be made. None of these decisions have been made yet. The MOU basically lays out these guiding principles and the goal of creating a tri-county MPO by July of 2027. So that gives us a good amount of time, kind of work through the many decisions that have to be addressed. So some of the guiding principles in the MOU representation should be proportionate to population. The governance structure, the voting membership, needs to emphasize elected officials. It could also include transportation operators like the Hillsborough County Aviation Authority. That decision hasn't been made yet. We need to be able to find a balance between local needs and regional needs. One way, you know, another way to look at doing that is to, you know, possibly have a larger regional board, but still have a board at each county level that helps coordinate on those, at a finer grain detail within each of our counties. Funding, I've been talking about funding for big transportation projects, but there's also the question of how do you fund the staff operations? We do get federal grants to support metropolitan planning, but they're all on a reimbursement basis, which means that there has to be some way to pay for all of the operations upfront, possibly covering a period of three to six months before those grant reimbursements can come through. So who knows? There might be a due structure that's proposed to help be able to float those costs. Couple other points in the MOU, outreach, public engagement, an essential part of this process, looking at staff services agreements, you know, rather than reinventing the wheel, creating our own staff, you know, what if this new MPO were to have an agreement with, like the Planning Commission, the Pinellas Planning Council, and continue to work with staff that's already available? And finally, you know, how do we make sure that we are still providing great opportunities to the staff that you currently have, serving your TPO? Because there's some specialized expertise there. And if there are questions about, you know, are they going to have a future here in this region? We could start having more staff attrition. So let's keep the talent that we have through this transition period if we possibly can. So we've got a lot of topics to be addressed. The first few are looking at the voting structure, the apportionment plan, what would a business model look like? And we're doing outreach to local governments and to the public. So I am going out making this presentation to all four of our local governments. And then we also have a public opinion survey live right now. I'm not going to go through all of these decisions for the next few years. Suffice it, suffice it to say, there's a lot that, a lot that has to be worked out. But I did want to share the QR code for the public opinion survey that is live right now. It's live through August 20th. It is structured to take a short amount of time. And, and you can find it on our website, which is planhillsborough.org. If you go to the TPO page on planhillsborough.org, you're going to find a link to the survey up at the top of the page. You can also find it at the website for our, the alliance of the POs in this region, the SunCoast Transportation Planning Alliance. And that website is suncoasttpa.org. And so at this time, I am open for your feedback, comments, and questions. I would like to be able to take any thoughts that you may have back to the TPO board as we go into this discussion. as we go into this discussion of potentially signing the inter-local agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Olden. Ask the clerk, did you already stop the timer? Good, okay. So, council, questions?
I, well, I have a concern.
Councilmember Fernandez.
And you may be more knowledgeable about this than I am, but my concern is that Temple Terrace, as one of the smaller cities in Hillsborough County and in this, in the region, we are frequently left out of all planning processes. And we find things out that will impact the city when, right when they're starting, or maybe when it's too late to have any meaningful impact. So that would be a very, that would be a very big concern of mine. I know Pinellas County has a lot more cities in their county. And it seems like in this structure, Temple Terrace would be overlooked and not have a voice. And I don't think that that would benefit the city, even as you're saying it, we might be able to get more planning. If we don't have a voice in the projects, we're not going to benefit. So that's my concern.
So, can I jump in? I think that's a concern that a lot of people have, and I have voiced that same concern during our conversations many times. So, a couple of things, and I've shared some of this, but yeah, I'm about neck-deep in this. So I do have some, at least, opinions. It doesn't mean that they're right, but there are opinions. That is a concern, not only for us, but for, it's even more pronounced if you go over to Pinellas, because they have, how many, 30 cities or whatever. So, and while we may be the smallest city in Hillsborough, we're not small compared to some of those cities. So I have voiced this concern. The TPO membership elected me to serve on the TMA Leadership Group, which is where some of these conversations are having. So I've been able to get a seat at the table, if you will. I think there, we'll, we will certainly lose our seat as Temple Terrace. There's, I mean, there's no way that, in a 25-person board, that you could apportion away that's going to capture a city our size. I do have some ideas about leveraging what Orlando did and what I would propose. And this is, I've not had this conversation with many people yet. We're not there yet. But my initial proposal is going to be, of the 25 seats, three of them are reserved for a small cities council. And those three members would be cities fewer than 50,000 people, which would capture Plant City and some of the cities in Pasco as well. And so those three seats, there would be one representative from Hillsborough, one from Pasco, and one from Pinellas. And so in Hillsborough, that would either be somebody from this council or from Plant City. We'd have to toggle back and forth or whatever. But so that we would at least have a voice. Now, whether the final product would be three seats out of 25 dedicated to that, or whether that would be maybe one, I don't know. But I'm going in looking for three. Because the needs of the cities along the beach, the coastal cities, there's different needs than there are in Plant City or Zephyr Hills or something. So that's the, that's the reason that I wanted to be appointed to the TMA Leadership Group, was to be able to be involved in that conversation. So your concerns are valid, though. That's, yes.
I, I mean, as you go forward, just keep that in mind.
Yep. No, you're, you're not out, that's the valid concern. Councilmember Abel.
I have a question. First, thank you for coming and making the presentation for us. It was really informative. My question's about the survey that you posted the QR code for. I think a lot of people, probably most people, don't really know what an MPO is, or what it means to merge, or anything like that. And I haven't had a chance to look at the survey yet. But I'm wondering if there's any kind of cursory educational pieces that go along with the questions to help people sort of understand what they're even talking about, so that you can actually get feedback that's helpful.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. And it's always a challenge with the kind of work that we do. And, you know, how do we synthesize it into something people can get their hands around? So, yes, the questions that are there, you know, one of them is about, like, what are your priorities for spending dollars on transportation projects? And that isn't so much going to affect this question of a merger or not, but it helps people to understand, like, what are the issues that this organization would be grappling with, you know? And then we also ask about, you know, as a board that looks at those kinds of questions, is making decisions, what are important factors to be considered? You know, is it, how much extra money can we bring into this region? Is it, what are we hearing from the neighborhoods? And a whole host of other factors that are in there. But, you know, just asking people to pick their top five and put them in priority order. You know, and then the last one then gets a little bit more specific about kind of giving a spectrum of, you know, both for a board, for your advisory committees, like the Citizens Advisory Committee, which is, you know, also required under state law for each MPO to have a Citizens Advisory Committee. You know, what's the right mix between regional and local? Do you, do you want to have a different Citizens Advisory Committee in every county, for example? So we try to make it comprehensible.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Schisler.
Yes, inasmuch as you're here to get our feedback and so forth, I did want to echo the concern of losing a seat at the table. It, you know, being a small city, we have to make as much noise as we can, whenever we can, to make sure that we're heard and seen. So that might, personally, I believe that that's, but that's my biggest concern with the, with the prospect of merging them together. I do like Mayor Ross's suggestion of, you know, three seats, if that's doable. I don't know, but hopefully that prevails and we'll be able to secure one of those seats on a rotating basis, if nothing else. So again, that's, that's my biggest concern, is losing a seat at the table and our voice in the mix. Thank you, but good presentation.
You would have some allies in Pinellas County on that request.
And I do plan to talk to the SunCoast League of Cities, my counterparts there, to see if we can have a, a meeting just for this topic, so that maybe we have the same approach.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, where, where's the QR code? Where can citizens find that?
It was on one of the slides.
I know, but I mean, where, if I was a citizen and they're watching this, where would they find the code?
So that, I would just suggest that folks go to one of the two websites that I mentioned. Either planhillsborough.org or suncoasttpa.org, which is SunCoast Transportation Planning Alliance.
Is there a way we could maybe put that link on our site, the city's site? If that's something we want to do?
Well, question, will a citizen be able to get to this information through our agenda packet?
The QR code wasn't in the agenda.
I put it in the minutes.
Yeah, it's in the last slide.
Yeah, just if someone wants to, so they don't have to work really hard to find it, you know?
And if you use social media, you could retweet us or share our Facebook post. We've put it, put out that link in social media.
I think Lori's got it. Okay, other questions, council?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Olden. Thanks for being here.
This will probably be my last appearance before you as TPO Director. And I just want to thank you all for being great partners. I'll be retiring in November, and I'm sure I will see you around the community.
So I'm not going to say goodbye to you now, because I'll see you 100 times before November. Thanks for coming. So I just want to comment, we had a number of people come in after the beginning of the meeting. So if you are here and you plan to address the council, either during open comment or on any particular agenda item, there are forms in the back of the room, on that little table back there. And I'd like to encourage you to fill that form out and provide it to the city clerk. And we will call you up at the appropriate time. So I don't know if people came in just to watch, or if they wanted to talk. But if you do want to address the council, you're welcome. Just please complete the form, so we know who you are and I know to call you up. So council members, if everybody, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from July 18th? And if so, is there a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Discussion, corrections? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays, the minutes are adopted. Next, are persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda? There are forms, as I mentioned, in the back of the room. We do have a 30-minute time limit for public comment. If we exceed 30 minutes, what we do is stop the portion so we can move on with the agenda, and then we resume public comment at the end. This does not include comments on specific agenda items. There's no cap on that, just open comments. There is a three-minute time limit for all speakers, and we do ask that people come to the podium and state your name and city of residence at the beginning of the statement. I currently have no requests to speak at this time. Okay. Council, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To approve.
Second.
Who got the second?
He can have it.
She's got it.
Seconded by Councilmember Schisler. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays, consent agenda is adopted. Next item is a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance amending the code by adopting a new Article 11 of Charter 12 to be titled Historic Preservation. Open the public hearing and ask Executive Assistant Jeannie Barlow to explain. Welcome, Mrs. Barlow.
Got the PowerPoint? Ah, there it is. Good evening, Mayor, council members, charter officers. I'm Jeannie Barlow. I am the city manager's assistant, and I'm here to present the first reading of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Preservation of historic properties ensures that the city of Temple Terrace, unique character and identity are maintained. Historic preservation is a tool that can develop community pride, revitalize neighborhoods and downtowns, spur economic development, promote tourism, and educate community residents about their shared heritage. Historic preservation leads to civic improvement, and many communities use historic preservation to protect important existing historic properties and chart a path for maintaining them. I would like to now talk about the city's previous efforts to create a preservation program. The city's historic preservation efforts have been ongoing for almost 50 years. In 1974, the council adopted Resolution 16974, agreeing to explore the concept of a single unitary system of historic preservation in Temple Terrace. In 1988, the council adopted Resolution 11488, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Historic Tampa Hillsborough County Preservation Board for the preparation of a Historic Architectural and Cultural Resources Survey for a cost of $10,000. This was a very important document as it contained a survey and a record of every 1920s Mediterranean Revival structure in the city. In the 1990s, the council seriously considered adopting a Historic Preservation Ordinance for the city's historic preservation properties. However, the proposed ordinance required mandatory participation and designated historic districts. After four years of discussion and several iterations of the ordinance, a consensus could not be reached, and the subject was set aside. In 2012, consideration of a Historic Preservation Ordinance was revived once again. Workshops and public meetings were held, and since there appeared to be sufficient support of historic preservation, the council directed staff to draft an ordinance. More discussion ensued, but unfortunately, due to budget constraints in an especially lean year, council decided to put historic preservation on hold with the idea of placing it as a priority goal in a subsequent year. With the city's centennial right around the corner, the city's history is once again becoming a focal point. In March 2022, the city council held a workshop on the Certified Local Government Program, or CLG, and invited a representative from the Florida State Division of Historical Resources to explain the CLG process and outline the benefits of becoming a CLG. With council's support to pursue becoming a CLG, a draft ordinance was prepared with the assistance of the State Historic Preservation Office, a local historic architect with STANTEC Engineering, and the city of Tampa's Historic Preservation Manager. A public meeting was also held to receive public input. Now let's talk about the importance of becoming a CLG. Adopting a Historic Preservation Ordinance is one component of becoming a Certified Local Government. The CLG program was enacted as part of the National Historic Preservation Act Amendments of 1980. The program links three levels of government, federal, state, and local, into a preservation partnership for the identification, evaluation, and protection of historic properties. Designation as a Certified Local Government makes historic preservation a public policy through the adoption of Historic Preservation Ordinance. The ordinance establishes an Historic Preservation Board to develop and oversee the functions of a Historic Preservation Program. Now how would becoming a CLG benefit the city? As a Certified Local Government, the state would provide the city with technical assistance and training programs, provide training for the city's Historic Preservation Board members and staff, provide the city with grant assistance for qualified preservation projects, small matching grants, $10,000 to $50,000, and special categories grants, up to $500,000. Being a CLG also provides the city with a formal role in the national register nomination process and allows property owners in the program direct participation in Florida's local tax abatement program. Now to become a CLG, the city must adopt a Historic Preservation Ordinance, appoint a Historic Preservation Board, and submit an application to the State Historic Preservation Office. After the city's application is approved, the State Historic Preservation Officer will sign the CLG agreement, and then, through the Division of Historic Resources, will send a request for certification to the National Park Service. The National Park Service typically sends notice of certification within a month of receipt of the CLG agreement. The Historic Preservation Ordinance before you tonight has the following key provisions. The ordinance establishes a volunteer Historic Preservation Board, a voluntary Historic Preservation Program, a process for national and local historic designations, criteria for the protection of exterior elements, a process for economic hardship exceptions, framework for property tax incentives on historically consistent improvements. The adoption of the ordinance and subsequent creation of a Historic Preservation Board are the important first steps for the city to become a Certified Local Government. Right now, Temple Terrace is the only local government in Hillsborough County to not have this distinction. That's it for my presentation, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Barlow. I do have one request from public comment, and there may be others, so don't go far. I do have one request currently from Rachel Kassen. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rachel Kassen, and I live in Temple Terrace. I own one of the historic homes, one of the 1920s Mediterranean homes, and I love it. And I just wanted to come and speak in support of this historical preservation amendment. I think it's a great idea. The Mediterranean Revival Architecture is an important part of American architectural history and a really important part of Florida's history, because that was part of the land boom in Florida back in the 20s, which really kick-started the whole state. I support this amendment. It provides a new option for homeowners and new tools for the residents who want to protect their homes. The program restrictions are reasonable. They have built-in flexibility. It's a voluntary program, and it benefits the property owners. So all great reasons to support it. I think it's a great idea, and it'll help preserve our city's history and keep what we love about Temple Terrace here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Kassen. Appears we have another person that wishes, sir, you wish to comment on this?
Just wait.
Yeah. Just bear with us, everybody. I think we have another person that wants to comment. I think we have another person that wants to comment.
Jean, Jean Coleman?
Good evening, ma'am.
Should I speak now?
Sure, how are you?
I'm doing fine.
Good.
I've lived in Temple Terrace since 1968, and so I have one of the old Mediterranean-style homes. And we have been working on it. In fact, I just completed $27,000 stucco and paint repair of the home. They're very expensive to maintain. So, I guess my concern would be if there is a board or committee that you have to submit plans to, what if the people on the board are relatively arbitrary? And the reason I bring that up as a concern is I remember when our cottage roof collapsed, and it is attached with the original maid's quarters for the home, and the previous owners had put sort of an apartment, like it really looked like a trailer. And my husband, who has done all the design on the modifications of my home, of our home, he had created a beautiful plan so that it would be within that Mediterranean-style architecture. And we submitted it, and it was denied. And so, I called, and I said, "Well, we're going to appeal that. Why would you say that we can't do a modification to be in style with this Mediterranean look?" And then, when I said I was going to appeal, then the denial was withdrawn, and we were able to go ahead with this beautiful renovation of the maid's quarters and the cottage. So, that was a concern of mine. It was just, it stunned me that that request was initially denied. So, I worry that if I opted in, can I opt out? You know, what exactly am I going to have to have approval of? If I want to take down the wall that's in front of my house that we built because with the rains, we're having incredible drainage problems, do I have to have permission in order to do that? So, for me, having lived in Temple Terrace for this many years and having put so much money into our home, and every improvement has always been within that Mediterranean revival style, I'm not worried about me. I'm going to continue with that tradition. And I understand this may be for people who buy these homes. Maybe they don't understand the cost and the stress of maintaining one of those homes. What if they opt in, and then they're faced with, well, they've got to replace their barrotile roof, and it's going to be $80,000? So, those are just the questions I have. I'm not saying it's a bad concept, but I just would like to have some more vetting as to how it's going to work for people who do want to make changes and people who say, "I don't want to spend the money." So, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleman. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay, Mrs. Barlow. Before I open it up for board questions, could you please respond to some of those before we lose track of her questions?
She had a number of questions.
Well, I wrote them down. There were a couple of specific ones, and one is what provisions would prevent the Historic Preservation Board from making arbitrary decisions?
Well, we are seeking members to the board. We will start with owners of the Mediterranean revival properties, so they will be able to serve on the board that makes these decisions. But the basis for the guidelines are with the Secretary of Interior's Standards for Rehabilitation. It never says original materials have to be used. What it stresses is that the historic character of a property will be retained and preserved. And it also says the new work shall be differentiated from the old and will be compatible with the historic materials' features, size, scale, and proportion enassing to protect the integrity of the property and the environment. It doesn't require like materials. It requires it to be compatible.
And how detailed is that governing document that's...
It's not, it's very lenient. If the board chooses, they could make guidelines that are specific to Temple Terrace. But we're starting now with these guidelines, which are very, I don't want to say vague, but they're not strict. They're more lenient than any other guidelines that...
So, what would prevent a board from creating a more draconian standard than what would really be appropriate? In other words, what if they... If they... You never know the composition of the board. What if they said, "No, you can't do that because we want to see..." That didn't exist in 1926.
They come up with new guidelines that are not these basic guidelines. I imagine it would have to go to the council for approval before it could be implemented.
Okay, City Manager?
So, just to clarify one thing. So, the way the ordinance is written also, the appointment of the members of the board, they're preferred to be from certain backgrounds, have architecture, history backgrounds, things of that nature, as well as laypersons who could be owners of property. Or these people also overlap. They could be in that background and be an owner of property. So, that's number one. So, the effort will be to have people who are informed about this matter so they can speak to these guidelines. And as Ms. Barlow noted, one of the powers that the board would have is to develop those guidelines. Yes, they would use the Secretary of Interior as a foundation, but at some point, I think early on, I think there'd be an expectation that they would come up with the guidelines so they could educate the public as to what that expectation would be if you are a property owner and you want to participate in the program. This is sort of the standards that we would be looking for. Now, I would anticipate that they would do that in a public setting, get input from the community as well, input from some of the property owners, and get a feel for something that works for Temple Terrace, not a cookie-cutter approach that works for, pick a community like Ma Door or whatever. So, that hopefully will clarify and help persuade some of the concerns that Ms. Coleman had.
Okay. The second question, Mrs. Barlow, that concerned opting out once you opt in. And I know we've read the ordinance, the draft, but could you please?
Yes. That has been a question over the past public meetings that we've had about opting out. And in my review of other historic preservation ordinances, there is no such. They don't have an opt-out. And when we were speaking to Dennis Fernandez, Historic Preservation Manager for the city of Tampa, he advised that the city can't develop a framework for historic preservation if you allow people to just hop in and out. So, once you're in, you're in, and it runs with the land, and it stays with your property. So, that's just an important part of the ordinance.
Okay. So, just for members of the public, we've passed the public comment question, or portion. So, I'm going to reopen it because this is an important topic. But if you think you want to address counsel, please fill out the form now because what I don't want to do is what we're doing, is to have a citizen come up and talk, and then I ask Ms. Barlow to respond, and then we get... So, now's the time. I'm going to reopen public comment. I do have an additional, and it looks like we're getting one more. So, Mrs. Barlow, if you just want to have a seat again, and we'll call you back up. So, Mr. Hawkins, I believe it is. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Hunt Hawkins. I own one of the historic properties. I have put a tremendous amount of money into it and have tried to keep the character, as the previous speaker said. And I was going to... I read the document this morning, and there is no opt-out provision. And it does seem that the wording is that it's voluntary. And so, for individual properties. And then, it was a little less clear as to how voluntary it was if you were part of a district, and the definition of a district was kind of vague. And so, I was kind of wondering how much... If you were put into a district, and it says all the members of the district have to sign an agreement. But I was just kind of curious about how much pressure there might be on you to sign up if you were put into a district. But my main question about this is that there doesn't actually seem to be any reason for homeowners to do this. I like the general idea of it. I like the historic character of Temple Terrace and the old houses. The only kind of carrot offered to the homeowners is that the tax... You know, there's some tax consideration. But I attended the public meeting back whenever it was, and it was admitted at that point that your tax benefit would actually be minuscule. And that really doesn't provide much of an incentive. So, my guess is that a lot of people just are not going to do this. They're not going to sign up for it unless there is some more clear offering of incentives. And you would be giving up a lot of rights over your property. It wasn't entirely clear exactly how draconian or not it would be, but we've done a lot of work on our house. We put in a wall. In the documents, that even, like, changing the landscaping was going to need approval. And we've done, you know, we planted flowers and things. And, you know, it's just very vague as to how much restriction there's going to be. And I'm thinking that most of the homeowners are going to be hesitant in the face of that vagueness to give up rights where it's not entirely clear what they're giving up for no real return. So, my suggestion is that you think of some more benefits for the homeowners.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. All right. Mr. Moody?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just real quick, and I wasn't going to say anything, but I just thought I could shed a little bit of light on one of those questions from before. So, she mentioned the Department of Interior Standards. That's really what the basis of those, you know, considerations are. So, that can be read. You can look that up online. And it is very basic, as she noted. It'll just say, like, for our instance, it'd be Mediterranean revival, traditionally has terracotta roof or some sort of stucco finish. It's very basic like that. I think what it would be trying to limit is if somebody said, "I want to go Key West-style on my house, you know, and I want to put all board and bat and siding, and I want to put, you know, a metal-type roof that looks like this." I think that would be the only thing that would be limited there. So, it's a very basic overview, especially for Mediterranean revival. And then, I think that was the only other portion. And then, I just wanted to emphasize that, from what it seems as we've been presented, this is a total voluntary thing. So, if you wanted to be a part of it, you could very well be a part of it. So, I just wanted to clarify those two things because that gets asked every time. But especially with the Department of Interior Standards, that is a national standard for the historic, for the National Park Service. So, that can be read by anybody, and that's really what the guideline would be, especially for our Mediterranean revivals.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Other members of the public? Okay. Mrs. Barlow, could you... And again, I'm going to open this up to council members at some point. But could you please talk a little bit about the issue that Mr. Hawkins brought up about the district? What if you live in a home, and your neighbors decide they want to become a district? Are you going to be compelled? And the second question is if you could speak a little bit more about the potential tax incentives or what other incentives may or may not exist, and kind of explain that to everybody who may not have read the draft.
Okay. So, first of all, for the historic districts, the Mediterranean revivals are situated in such a way that a historic district would really not work for our city. But if for some reason, somebody said, "We got to do a historic district," then every single property owner in the proposed historic district would have to agree to it. There'd be no way, it says right in the... The consent of all property owners of each property proposed for designation must consent. So, if you said no, there'd be no district.
Okay. And could you speak for benefit of the public about the proposed potential tax benefits or...
Well, I've listed some incentives because Mr. Hawkins said, you know, what would we get for this? So, first of all, voluntary program. Second, designating a historic property, both locally or in the national register, is a prestigious honor and officially recognizes the historic or architectural significance of the property. Studies commissioned by the Florida Department of State found that designation of a historic property improves marketability and increases property values. You have access to financial incentives, the ad valorem incentives on historic property improvements, which it's outlined in the ordinance. So, if you wanted to do some improvements to your property, let's say you put in $50,000 of improvements, then the assessed value of the property after the improvements would be tax-free for 100% for up to 10 years. Income-producing properties, this is specifically commercial buildings that are listed on the national register may be eligible for a 20% federal rehabilitation investment tax credit for costs invested in the renovation and rehabilitation. And also, we're considering all application fees to be waived up to a certain time period. So, our all applications for a COA or whatever, you'd get six months free. And then, we would fast-track permits, inspections, reviews. We would put them on a fast-track so you wouldn't have to wait. Free technical advice. Our building department would offer assistance and recommendations on how you could make your improvements. And we also are considering a bronze marker in your yard, designating your membership in the program, and possibly photo displays of enrolled properties at the library, just as a way of recognizing those that are in the program.
Thank you, Mrs. Barlow. Okay. Councilmembers, I know you've waited patiently. So, City Attorney, I didn't...
When you were last asking for public comment, I was going to comment then. I'm not speaking as the city attorney, but as an owner of a 100-year-old house in St. Petersburg. And when the question came up about offering "What's in it for me?" kind of thing, there was really nothing in it for me but hard work and pride in my house. And when I put 20 years' worth of work into preserving that old house that was a wreck when I bought it and bringing it back to what it once was in the 1920s, I don't want to ever see that undone by somebody else. And so, that's what's in it for me. It's historic preservation. It's preserving this very unique house I own and preserving all of the work and the effort and the money and the time that was put into it. And there were things that... And as an attorney, I had advised the Historic Preservation Board in St. Petersburg. Windows seem to be a big issue all the time because there, when you're replacing a wood window, there were requirements. If you have an old house like mine, you don't want to put vinyl windows into that. They had wood windows. And in St. Pete, they required you, if you have a historic home, to replace those with wood windows. So, it was an effort. It took time and waiting in order to be able to afford to do that. But I don't want to ever see that undone by somebody else coming along who doesn't care. And this way, the board of the city will make sure that that is continued with that house. And that's the way, if people here have a pride in preserving their home, and again, it's voluntary, the city will make sure that the work you put into it will be preserved. And so, that, to me, is the answer to that question.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheldon. Let me start down here. Thank you, Mrs. Sherman. Let me start down here. I never start down here. Council Member Abel?
Well, I was just going to look up information about the landscaping because Dr. Hawkins said something about having to get permission for landscape changes, and I just wanted to ask about that.
Anything that needs a building permit will need a COA.
Okay.
So that wouldn't include landscaping?
No.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Council Member Schuster?
Hey, I got a couple. Just to clarify, it, once you're in, you're in, you can opt out. What about on the successive sales of the property? It stays with the property for ever and ever?
Runs with the land, yes.
Okay. All right. At the, the public workshop that we had on, on this issue, I think you came up about the mid-century houses being involved with this. I don't see the, I don't see them, I think, I'm getting the vibe that it's just the mid, just the, the 1920s houses.
Well, yes, we're focusing on the 1920s. The criteria for designation includes properties that are 50 years or older, but there's a list of six items which would apply to the criteria. So it's not just age of the house, significant to the city history, architecture, archaeology, or culture, associated with distinctive elements of the social, political, economic, scientific, religious, prehistoric architectural history of the city. Properties are associated with the lives of persons significant in the city. Properties which embody the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or style. Properties which have yielded or likely to yield information about the history of the city, or properties that are already on the National Register. So that's criteria to be used in determining if a property is eligible.
That pretty much limits it to the 1920 houses then, because the, the others are so generic.
Well, right now, but in the future.
Well, my concern is, is the, and I'm not sure whether we, is this still asking questions?
Questions, yeah.
The man, the voluntary portion, how, is the ordinance written in such a way that a future council could not morph it into mandatory? Do we have to put, could we put something like a poison pill in there that if it does, if, if a future council decides to do it mandatory, that it forces it to a referendum? I don't know, something, something like those.
You can't bind future councils.
Huh?
You can't bind future councils.
I'm just, the concerns I had, these are phone calls that I had regarding this issue. And I said, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
You can't bind.
And, no, that answers my questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. I know opting out isn't allowed once you're in. Is there a deadline for getting in? Can you sit out five years and choose to come in?
There's no deadline for getting in.
So people that have concerns can wait a while and see what happens? Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Council Member?
I have a couple of questions. I just want to clarify how a property becomes eligible because right now, at the, at the date that we are, everybody's talking about the Mediterranean Revival. However, the mid-century modern are going to start coming into that, that same age. And then, you know, the 1980s Brady Bunch house that, that I have is eventually going to be in that age. And I just want to make sure that, that we've set this ordinance up to accommodate the aging of our housing so that it, we don't have to rewrite an ordinance. Because my house is, is straight up 1981 with the cedar in that, you know, it's got absolutely not one design element in common with a Mediterranean Revival or a mid-century. So that, so that's one thing. I just want to make sure that we've, that the criteria is generic enough that as the building ages move into the categories that could potentially be designated, that this same ordinance accommodates them. But then, I have a question about the building code, and this is specific to the mid-century modern, because we've been having issues with actually tho, I mean, not mid-century modern, the Mediterranean Revival. They're, they're not in technically compliance with our existing building code. So how does approval of, like, right now, they usually have to get variances to do anything on their property. So how does this?
This, this does not touch on the variance at all. The ordinance does not address a variance. So if you need a variance, you'd still have to go to the Board of Adjustment.
So a homeowner would need to basically get, if they were, if they opted into the program, they would need to get approval that their renovation is historically consistent and meets this criteria. But then, for the building code process, they would have to get, go through the building.
The variance. But actually, the building code, the Florida Building Code has a section, C 501.6, called Historic Buildings. And I'll read it to you. It says, "No provisions of this code relating to the construction, repair, alteration, restoration of movement of structures, and change of occupancy shall be mandatory for historic buildings provided a report has been submitted to the code official and signed by a registered design professional or representative of the state Historic Preservation Office or the Historic Preservation Authority having jurisdiction, demonstrating that compliance with that provision would threaten, degrade, or destroy the historic form, fabric, or function of the building." So a property in the program, this is eligible to that property as regard building, but not variance. Variance is a separate zoning issue.
Okay, so, so let's say they've, because of the setback, that they want to fix the porch that was originally on the house, basically restore it, and, but because of the setback, our building code wouldn't allow that. They would need to get, the, the plans would need to first be approved as being historically compliant or consistent with the building, and then they would need to go to the building department.
I think they would go to the variance first.
Okay.
And then to the COA process.
But they would, but they would need to go through both processes unless we modify the building code in the future.
Yes, City Manager?
So I just, I think what we're talking about in terms of setback, that's more of a land development code issue. So that would be through the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
And right now, unless, I'm looking at Mr. Sherman in the back, probably isn't a provision in that case to make an exception in the setback example you're talking about. And might correct me if I'm wrong?
I guess I'm just, I just want to make it clear for, try, you know, because our historic preservation guidelines might not be in compliance with our building code with some of the houses and who, you know, we don't want to make it more complicated for people.
Yes, ma'am. So in your porch example, so if, if a historic home has a porch that needs rebuilding, then the porch is already there. It wouldn't be encroaching into, if you encroached into the, into, further into the setback requirement or the yard requirements, then you would need a variance. But to reconstruct what's there, the setback wouldn't, issues wouldn't come into the play then?
If somebody, throughout the years, people have remodeled homes and they've taken off, maybe they've taken off a historic element, like the front porch. And then, as you're working on your house and you're putting, you're, you're restoring it to the original, now you're, the porch is gone. So now you're going to be putting the porch back because the structure's been modified, maybe in the 1970s, they didn't want a porch, you know, whatever. But, so I just want to make it, I just want to, for us, to make it simple for people to understand the process when they're doing some kind of renovation to this house, the steps that they would go through. Because I know people that own these homes are familiar. They have to, a lot of times, they have to get a variance to do the work on the homes. But that's all. I just, I just want to be clear with the people that are listening, or the people that may listen, or the people that are going to come in front of you, what the process would be like for them to actually do some sort of restorative remodeling on their house.
There may need to be a change to our, our Board of Adjustment or the variance requirements. But I imagine if a hardship could be proven with it, you know, being there, it's not an economic hardship, it wasn't self-created hardship, then they would be able to get a variance under existing regulations.
Well, okay, so really, where I'm going with this is, what takes precedence? Okay, we, we have, we have our building code. We have the Mediterranean Homes that often don't meet the building, current building code. But yet, if they want to do some, some sort of remodeling that is keeping consistent with the historic nature of the house, what takes priority? I mean, are we going to automatically grant variances because they'll need it in order to abide by the tenants of the Historic Preservation Code? Or are they going to have to get, I, I'm just trying to get that established, not if it's a hardship, we'll give them a variance. I'm trying to get established what the steps are that somebody who owns one of these properties would actually take under this, under this Historic Preservation guide, you know, the code, the ordinance, and then, at the same time, performing the remodeling.
She's got the answer.
Okay.
Our deputy city attorney has recommended language that would allow the Historic Preservation Board to serve as a Board of Adjustment. He can explain it. Two, two grand variances.
Now, I come at this having been legal representation for the City of Tampa for their Bario Latino Commission, for their Architectural Review Commission. And so variances, as you're talking about, there actually go to those respective boards. They don't go to what they're, they have what's called the Variance Review Board. But for historical properties that have been designated historic, they go to the Bario Latino Commission, who does the, not only the variances, but also certificates of appropriateness. The way your ordinance is written right now, it does not provide for that, the Historic Preservation Board to do the variances. But I have drafted language, if you want to put it in there, to where we could, to where it be one board instead of two. All right? And so what would happen is, and let's talk a little bit about the designation process, the Historic Preservation Board would review an application and make a recommendation to the City Council. City Council is one that would designate that property. Once that property is designated, then if they want to do work, you know, if the property owner wants to work on that board, I mean, on that board, on that house, then they would go for a certificate of appropriateness in front of the Historic Preservation Board. If you would like, we can also have that once they're designated, and they're going to have to deal with perhaps variances and stuff like that, that that could also go to that Historic Preservation Board, and they would deal with the variances using the same criteria that our Board of Adjustment would. But it's a one-stop shop, and they would also be taking into account the fact that they're dealing with a historic, with a historic property. I think there's one more thing I wanted to bring up, but I can't remember it right now. But I, does that kind of help explain, and, you know, and that, and again, that, what's in front of you right now does not have the Historic Preservation Board doing the variances, but I do have a copy of a draft, you know, that you could do, that you could do the first reading on today.
I would want to ask our building department, or, I mean, or you, or somebody in that field, if you think that that is a reasonable, to me, that seems reasonable to, to adopt that language, that then the homeowner doesn't have to go multiple places.
So from, from our perspective, anything we could do to make this process more, more efficient for the homeowner is fine with us. The deputy city attorney has, he briefed us about this earlier this week. We didn't include it here because we, we felt like, let's talk about this as presented, and if that's something the council wanted us to do, we would definitely look at it. Because it would be a change, definitely a change. But I don't see any drawback to doing it that way. And you're correct, it would be a one-stop shop. And that would go to, I believe, Mr. Hawkins, when he, he said the concern about what, what's in it for, for the property owner. This would definitely be an advantage that you'd have.
Okay, and then I just have one more question. And that is, when we talked about, what, what are the incentives for a property owner to participate in the program? Is this, is that something that, over time, the city could actually amend the ordinance to add, to add value or add incentives as, as maybe they, they come up and seem relevant?
Correct. So the, the ordinance, the council always has the, the ability to amend the ordinance. If they want to make it more generous, they could. We presented an ordinance that we thought was with, compliance within what the state allows us to do. It provides for up to 10 years of, of basically tax exemption on the improvement portion of, that someone might do to those properties. And depending on the magnitude of that, that, that could be a pretty significant benefit over a decade. But yes, you could, down the road, we could look at different alternatives if you wanted to do something else in addition to that.
So I, I would like to entertain the language that combines the boards.
Okay, we're not there yet, though. We're still at questions.
I'm not making a motion.
Okay, all right.
It's my.
Okay. So, back for more questions. Okay, anything else, Mrs. Barlow, Mr. Sherman? Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Temple Terrace Code ordinances by adopting a new Article 11 of Chapter 12 to be entitled Historic Preservation, providing for purpose and intent, for definitions for Historic Preservation Board, for review authority for National Register of Historic Places procedure, for historic designation for certificates of appropriateness, for maintenance and repair of landmarks, landmark sites, and property in historic districts, for stop-work orders, for fees enforcement, for procedures, for ad valorem tax exemptions for historic properties, for civil penalties, for severability, for authority, authority to codify, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with, herewith, and for ineffective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That was a mouthful. So I'll come to Council Member Fernandez. Would you like to craft a motion?
Well, I would, I would like to move that we adopt the ordinance amending the code by adopting a new Article 11 of Chapter 12 to be titled Historic Preservation on first reading, but with the language amendment that our deputy city attorney stated, to combine the, I don't really know how to state it.
To provide the BOA duties to the Historic Preservation Board for enrolled properties.
Yes.
Is that what you?
Yes.
Okay. Is that good that I said it, or she need to say it?
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, council members? Council Member Schuster?
Does, does the new language eliminate the old Board of Adjustment? Or, okay, that's good. No, that's fine. That's fine. No, no, that's okay. That's okay. As long as that's still there.
Just for properties enrolled in the program. That is your intent, correct?
Yes.
I just want that clarified.
All the student is authorizing the board to be able to do variances using the same criteria as the.
Eliminates another layer.
Understood, understood.
That was your intent.
Yes, that is.
Comments? Discussion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Ordinance is adopted on first reading, and this ordinance will appear for a second reading in public hearing on Tuesday, August 15th, 2023. The second reading will include the revisions tonight concerning the variance powers. Very good. Thank you. And thank you for the public for being here and your comments. We greatly appreciate you taking the time to be here. Thank you. Next item is the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the code entitled Purchasing. City Manager Carlos Baia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So under the current purchasing ordinance, purchases ranging from $1,001 to $24,999 simply require the securing of three quotes. Any purchase over $25,000 triggers the issuance of a competitive sealed bid package in City Council approval. That number has been fixed in place at least dating back to 2001 and perhaps even earlier, that $25,000 threshold. And what we found at, at the staff level is with, with inflation, particularly over the last couple of years, but just over time, just the necessary sort of appreciation of cost, that more and more acquisitions, purchases, projects, et cetera, are triggering that threshold. And so that's part of the reason why you see so many piggyback contracts coming before you, because that's another tool that can be used to offset the need for the competitive sealed bid. The competitive sealed bid, one of the, has a number of detractors. First, it, it requires a lengthy process. You have to publish notice in the paper. You have to make sure you do, you have sometimes mandatory pre-bids, bond requirements for bidders. It typically will add 60 or 90 days to a process for an acquisition of a particular good or, or to, or a service. When we looked at the number, we did a comparison, we looked at other communities, about 36 other communities in the area, in central Florida on the Gulf Coast, and we found that 17 actually had bid thresholds of $50,000 or greater. Five used $35,000 as the threshold, and 13 used $25,000. In our region, Tampa, St. Pete, Clearwater, Dade City, Largo, Seminole, and Zephyr Hills are all at 50,000. Pinellas Park is at 35,000, and Lakeland is at 35,000. What we are requesting this evening with this change is to just bring us up to today's marketplace. $25,000 in 2001 equates to about $43,000 today. And as anybody knows, if you had to buy anything, be it in the supermarket, or, or hard goods, or whatever, the costs are just so much higher. So it would just allow us to just be quicker with our turnaround, and we'd still do competitive quotes from different firms, that process would continue. And obviously, anything that triggers 50,000 or above would still have to go to council and, and follow the bid process if you approve this as part of this ordinance. Happy to take any questions.
Good, thank you, Mr. Bea. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Seeing none, council members, questions, council member Schuster.
With, with the $50,000 threshold, how many of the, this, I, I, you probably can't answer this, but I, I would think that many of the consent agenda items would not have come before us in the past six, eight months, is that?
I wouldn't say many wouldn't have, if, if you see, if you look back at your agendas, you see a lot of piggyback arrangements coming for you, that's, that's a way to address the same issue as well. It allows us to avoid the competitive sealed bid, but it has, like I mentioned, has some drawbacks, because you have to, first of all, you have to find a contract that you can piggyback off of, and then you are subject to whatever terms that contract they negotiated, which may not be beneficial to us. And in fact, we've had a, we had a contract for services with Safebuilt, that's part of our building department, and their contract was expiring, yet we were still sort of in the middle of, of our process with them, so we had to work this situation, I actually talked to the city attorney about how we could handle that, because in essence, we would, we would not have a contract overnight. And so those are the kind of complications that come from that process.
Other questions, council members, council member Fernandez?
I have a question. I know that the budget is the overriding force of being fiscally responsible, but a lot of times, those piggyback contracts, they're with larger entities, and they've been able to negotiate maybe a lower price than we could negotiate on our own. How, how would you still be able to, let's say, get, get the most buying power as a small city versus maybe going in on piggybacking off a sheriff's contract or something?
So, I think what we would do is, we would still have the tool, the piggyback alternative doesn't go away. And you're right, in, in instances, for example, if we were buying something that the, the Sheriff's Association has, has put out a bid across the state, yeah, economy and scale are absolutely correct, that would make more sense for us. So, I, I would believe and trust in our staff that that, that's something, we're always going to look for the best value for the City of Temple Terrace. So if we can find a contract that's out there that works for that particular good and makes sense, we'll do the piggyback route. However, if we can just do a competitive quote, I mean, if we're just buying something that's simpler, but now it's going to be $25,000 in one, you know, $25,001, for example, we'd have to come through this whole other process, but if we can just acquire it through competitive quotes, like a lot of us do in our own personal lives, you know, you try and call three people, have document those quotes, that's the process we would use as well.
Other questions, council members? Okay, very good. If there are no other questions, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Article 5 of the Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances entitled Purchasing, by amending the definition of lowest responsible bidder, adding a definition for sealed bids, amending Section 2-347 by replacing administrative regulations with operational procedures, deleting Section 2-349, amending Section 2-350 by increasing the threshold of purchasing amount that will not require city council approval, amending Section 2-378 by adding paragraph headers and deleting paragraph B, amending Section 2-378 to clarify it for non-public works purchases of $50,000 or more, and adding language for email bids, amending Section 2-379 to clarify it for public works contracts of $50,000 or more, providing a severability clause, effective date, authority to codify and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, is there a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the code entitled Purchasing.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion on the motion, council member Schuster.
Yeah, this, this issue came before us several months ago, and I had apprehension at that point as to the threshold for our yea and nay. I still have that apprehension. I know we've done it in the past, you know, we get, we get, and, and again, this is not an indictment of, of staff or departments, it really isn't. It's a question of internal controls and oversight on our part. This is, this is our responsibility for this type of oversight. I don't, I, I strongly, I feel strongly that 50,000 is too much. I could be more comfortable with 35, okay? 20, I recognize that 25, I can't buy a car, I can't buy a truck, can't buy hardly anything. But the requirement to still come before this body, I think, is very, very important, and I've heard people say, wow, you know, it's, that's a lot of money that you're, that you're losing control over it, or losing yea and nay over it. I understand this is just first reading, but I would tru, I would really like the council to consider, instead of a $50,000 threshold, something more appropriate, this, you know, accounting for some of the $35,000 threshold at, at the max for this, that's.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
And, and almost everybody in this room knows more about this than I do, so this may be a stupid question, but let me ask you this. What if, if this is legal and legitimate accounting and all that, you have to tell me that, but what if we changed the threshold for sealed bids to $50,000, like we're proposing to do? But we put a provision in there that anything, any purchases over $35,000 have to have council approval? That relieves the onus of the sealed bids, and it still provides the council oversight. The sealed bids are the, that's the real problem.
I know, it's, I, I understand the.
So what if we eliminate the bid requirement up to 50,000, but, but stipulate that anything that they are going to buy over 35 requires council approval, because that doesn't take that long, they can get it before us pretty quick.
No, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, I just don't think that we should give up that approval process. It's just another set of internal controls.
Would you vote for it?
I would vote for that, yes.
Okay, Jim, is that legal?
I believe it is, because I.
Is it legit? Can we do it that way, or is there some reason why that's no good?
Double check, but I believe in studying on what other jurisdictions do, I have seen this scenario, where you have a higher threshold for going out to bid than you do for just going to council approval. So I do think you can, but we can double check.
Mr. Bea, how do you feel about that, if we?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I think we would, we would accept whatever concession the council would feel comfortable with, because we really just are trying to improve the efficiency of the organization.
I, I, I just don't want to lower the threshold to sealed bids to 35, because you can't buy a car. And that's a lot of your purchases between 35 and 50, probably vehicles, and we don't need to.
Agreed, no, I, I could, that makes, it makes it efficient for staff, it makes it efficient for the departments, and, and it still gives us the, the requisite control that we, you know, that we're, we're guaranteeing citizens, and we're watching everything, so much as we can.
Okay, so here we are, we have a motion on the table that does not include this, and we're going to wind up with a split vote if we don't.
But I would like discussion.
Yes.
I am comfortable with the original at 50,000. I'm also comfortable with the amendment, if that's what happens, but 35 is still too low, in my opinion. I mean, inflation takes it to 43, so I could maybe go as low as 40 for that. But we were fine with 25, and 25 now is 43. 35 is too low.
If we go to 50, if we go to 40, we might as well just leave it on 50, because I mean, that's.
And I'm good with that.
Pretty small slot there, so. Let's hear from council member Abel.
I have a question, like council member Chambers, I was fine with it at 50, and I'm also okay with having the threshold for making sure council approves, but I'm, I'm wondering, I guess, for the city manager, how, how onerous is it to have council approve things at a threshold, any threshold we set, but 35, for example?
I wouldn't call it onerous, I would just say it just adds a little bit of time to the process.
Like, two weeks, or?
Typically, well, it could be two weeks, it's probably more like three weeks, honestly, by the time you get, you get it organized, get it on the agenda, get it posted. But like I said a second ago, you know, if, I, we want to, we want to improve this, but we also want to do something that obviously the council can be comfortable with, because we know this is a big decision.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say something? No, I didn't really.
Sure.
So, I, I respect your opinion a great deal, as I think all of us do. I just, you know, nothing that we do here is irreversible, and as the vice mayor pointed out, the equivalent to doing would be $43,000, would take us to being where we were all along, really, in today's dollars. $50,000 is not, I mean, it's a lot of money if it's yours, but I mean, in the city world, the commercial world, that's not, I mean, the tile cost, I don't know what, but I mean, can we try this at 50? And if you see stuff going on that you don't feel comfortable with, or something, because we know what they're buying, I mean, we don't know everything, but we know, are you that uncomfortable that we can't pass this?
Could we receive a report periodically on things that we, that, things that we've acquired? Just, and I'm not, I don't care about the, the operational stuff, I'm talking, you know, major, anywhere between the 35 and the 50, could we get a report on that periodically?
Yes, sir, yeah, we could do that.
Okay, and then, and then that way, we can gauge what's going on, we can gauge what's happening. I mean, because, you know, we, we've, we've seen instances in the past where we split things up so that we go below the 25,000, okay? I mean, we've actually seen that happen. And again, it's not an indictment of, of staff or the departments, it's just the oversight that, how did that happen? Because that, that's the questions you get asked at Publix type thing. So, anyway, yeah, I can live with that, provided we could get, I can live with that, provided we receive a periodic report on, on things that we've acquired, and it doesn't even have to be that greatly detailed, I don't care necessarily what it is, but, you know, the, the things that we've done, that would, I could, I could live with that. And then that way, we could address it later if we need to.
Okay.
Okay.
We don't want to pass something you're not comfortable with.
No, I understand, I understand. Vice Mayor? And I, I would think that would be fine also. I know the city manager's done a very good job of doing his reports to council, part of your, your report tonight, you've got an item, so that could be incorporated to that report, and I would be very happy with that.
Council member?
Well, I want to comment on the oversight aspect, because it, I, for the public to understand the budget process, we, in Temple Terrace, have a pretty, a fairly in-depth budget process, and our city staff and the city manager go through each of the funds and each of the, the spending areas and the departments, and we scrutinize all of the dollars that are allocated to each department each year in the budget process. And that's the overriding mechanism to make sure that spending is appropriate, because we've already gone through and determined what each department is going to be spending based on what they need and, and the funds available. So it's not possible for a department to spend outside of their budgetary restrictions without council knowing that, because we get the reports that show what our spending is compared to budget, and obviously, that's a cash flow issue as well, you can't just spend money you don't have. So I, I do like the concept of council approving at 35 and below, and 50,000 for sealed bids, but I am willing to go with the 50,000 threshold as long as we're getting the reports. But I just want to make sure that the public knows through the process that it's, that it doesn't mean that there's no oversight to spending, because we do watch the budget very carefully in the city, so I just wanted to make sure that that was said.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to raise the threshold to $50,000, and with the caveat that we will receive periodic reports of purchases that are over 35,000 or so.
Now, is that put in the ordinance? That caveat?
No, the caveat does not, that's not part of the motion, but that's the understanding. Everybody comfortable with this?
Yes.
You're, you're good? Okay. If there is no further discussion, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, a nay sign? Ordinance is adopted, and?
First reading.
On first reading, I'm looking, just make sure I'm on the right one. Ordinance is adopted on first reading and will appear for a second reading in public hearing on Tuesday, August 15th, 2023. Next issue is a resolution approving project manager, manage, I'm going to start this over. Resolution approving project manager services to oversee the American Rescue Plan Act stormwater projects, and our utilities director Troy Tinch is here to explain.
Good evening, Your Honorable Mayor, City Council. I'm here this evening to request funding for a consultant to assist city staff with management of the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, stormwater projects. As you're all aware, there are some very defined timeframes for when these ARPA projects have to be completed. The projects have to be under construction by the end of 2024 and completed by 2026. And so I sat down with our staff, I sat down with the city manager, we started really looking deeply into these projects, we have about two and a half million dollars' worth of stormwater projects that are due to be funded through ARPA, and made a decision that, due to our current workload and in some staffing issues, as, again, I think you're also aware, we are still in the process of trying to hire a junior-level engineer. We have finally secured a engineering inspector who will be coming on board middle of this month, but the long and short of it is, staffing has been a real concern and a real problem. So we reached out to one of our consultants, and we asked them for an estimate to assist us with these five projects that we have identified, and that we want to have those projects overseen by these consultants, they would be basically overseeing all aspects of it, from design, routine interactions with us during that design process, all the way through the bidding process and in the construction. The firm that we selected was JMT, they provided us with what we thought was a reasonable cost estimate to conduct this effort. So we are recommending that city council adopt the resolution, authorizing the expenditure of $246,934.80 to Johnson, Meriman, and Thompson Incorporated for project management services related to five stormwater projects funded through the American Rescue Plan Act. I will stand for questions, if any.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions for Mr. Tinch. Councilmember Fernandez?
I just want to make sure that this is a, an expense that we anticipated and have put in the budget.
So, it is an acceptable expense, as far as the dollar amount needed to oversee these projects. One of the stormwater projects was for $500,000, and it was for general stormwater improvement project. So it would be like going out to stormwater ponds and removing muck material, or, or doing enhancements to that stormwater pond. So what we're looking to do is dip into that $500,000 that was allotted to pay for this effort, and still have about $250,000 left over to complete that effort that was originally identified as an ARPA project.
And then what happens to the fee if they are, I mean, if the projects extend past the time that we are anticipating in this agreement?
So it's a time and material scenario, so if, the whole idea behind bringing them on board is to ensure that we meet that schedule, right? So. So at the end of the day, if the schedule is met, the project is constructed, everything is said and done, and there are dollars left over, those will come back to the city, or in a sense, I guess it would go back to the federal government. I don't know that they've decided what, any excess dollars, where those will go.
That's it.
Other questions, council members? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tinch. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution for the project manager, project manager services to oversee the ARPA stormwater projects.
Second. Motion, the second. Discussion on the motion?
I just have one comment.
Sure.
I, thank you. I've been, I've been worried about this for three years, two years now, at least.
Take your comments to heart.
Okay, because this is, this is big projects.
Yes, they are.
If they fail, if they don't get done, we're a deep, we get a deep financial issue.
I agree a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution adopting a tentative millage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Our finance director, Jim Ingram, is here to explain. Good evening, Mr. Ingram.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Pursuant to Florida statutes, section two hundred dot oh six five A one, the city's first step in the annual budget adoption process is to compute a proposed millage rate necessary to fund the tentative budget using no less than ninety-five percent of the taxable value certified by the property praiser. On or before August fourth, twenty twenty-three, the city is required to advise the property appraiser of the proposed millage rate, the rollback millage rate, and the date, time, and place of the city's public hearing to consider the proposed millage rate and tentative budget. The tentative millage rate that is adopted should be a rate the city council does not expect the adopted budget to exceed, although the rate may be decreased either before or at the first and/or final budget public hearings. Conversely, if the rate adopted at the public hearings in September exceeds the proposed rate, the city will incur the expense of notifying each taxpayer of this increase by first-class mail. Yeah, something we don't want to do. After the completion of several budget workshops, council has determined that the tentative millage rate should be set at six point four five five, which is no change from last year's millage rate of six point four five five mils. City, the city staff shall prepare a budget with a millage rate of six point four five five, which would generate seventeen million, nine hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars. That's ninety-five percent of the ad valorem, based on six point four five five and our property values, in tax revenue and allows for continuation of existing public service levels. Staff recommends that council adopt the proposed tentative millage rate of six point four five five to submit to the property praiser on or before August fourth, twenty twenty-three. And I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions for our finance director. Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution adopting a tentative millage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Motion, the second. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Next, a resolution reducing the number of committee members on the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, and council member Abel is going to explain.
Yes, as you all probably know, I brought this up at the last meeting after talking it over with city manager and the city attorney. I brought this up because we've been having quorum issues. Well, first it was attendance issues that escalated into quorum issues, and I'm eating a little humble pie here because I realized this is a problem of my own making, because it was originally designed to be a committee of five. But I was excited, and very well-intentioned, but excited, and I proposed to move it up to seven. But I see the wisdom of what the mayor pointed out at that time, and recently, I sent letters to people who had chronic low attendance, who missed three meetings. We only meet bi-monthly, so that's really significant. And from those letters, two people resigned, which means we currently only have five active members, and we have two empty seats. So the last meeting, we canceled because there was no quorum, and the meeting before that, people showed up, but we couldn't do anything. So I was hoping that we could resolve to reduce our membership down to five. It would be easier to get a quorum, and we have established a very dedicated group that's committed, but we can't do anything because our committee's too big. And I know citywide, we've also been having some, some issues getting people to sign up for committees, so I think that this is just the right move to make. So I hope you all will indulge me here.
Good. Thank you, council member. Members of the public, anybody would like to comment on this? If not, council members, questions for council member Abel.
The only reason we held off was to, you guys could participate if there was anything.
I mean, the only thing, I know, I watched the meeting, so I think the only concern that I would have, which was expressed by council member Schittler, and that is, are there any requirements? Have we promised anything to any of the boards in Hillsborough County that we are required to have a seven-member board versus five? But otherwise, I have no issue taking it to five.
No, there's no. Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure. Approve a resolution reducing the number of committee members on the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee.
Second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor. Yep?
If we can, if the, the motion to approve this would include the removal of an extra word.
Microphone, microphone.
In the title.
Okay.
The title has, has an extra word in it that should not be there, where it says on the third line of the title, to five, and it should say city resident members, not five resident city resident members. So just that.
Mr. Scriff, that strikes again. Yeah.
Just a typo.
Okay. So you need?
Motion's the same.
Yeah.
But do we?
With the correction. Just the motion with the correction.
Could you restate the motion to include the recommended corrections?
I move to approve the resolution reducing the number of committee members on the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee with the change mentioned by the city attorney.
Somebody renewed?
Second.
Okay, we have a renewed motion and a renewed second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any carryover council business from previous meetings? Just have one quick thing. I know you've struggled with the B-PAC, the bicycle pedestrian, and I don't expect this to happen overnight, because I know you've had attendance issues, but could we get some status report sometime in the somewhat near future about where they are with the project that we asked them to undertake for bike, bicycle paths throughout the city and where those might go and stuff? I'm hoping that they've been working on that.
Yes, we have been.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. New business or board reports?
I have one.
Yes, council member Abel.
So this is in the same vein as the, the last issue that I spoke about, but I inquired about the procedures for removing somebody from an appointment that we made. I have somebody who we appointed for the Hillsborough County B-PAC, who has never attended a meeting, nor have they come to any of our B-PAC meetings. They're an alternate on that, on that board. And I've reached out to them, I've sent them a letter, we haven't heard from them. After sending the most recent letter, I, I reached out for an attendance report to the county B-PAC, and once again, this person did not attend. And when I asked about the procedures for removing somebody, city attorney said that I should run it by you all about removing this person, so we can open up that seat and get someone who can hopefully attend those meetings. So, yeah, we need to remove this person.
Okay. So I, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, council or city staff, but I think our rules say only, you know, we appoint people to the boards and they serve at the pleasure of the city council, so the city council can remove people too. I think it's just simply incumbent upon whoever the council liaison is to that board to come here and make a motion for their removal and explain, and I think the council, I don't think we need new rules, I think that's the procedure.
Right. So do I have to say their name to?
You would.
Okay. Well, I move to remove Jamie Morris from the Hillsborough County Bicycle Pedestrian Liaison position.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? I do have a question. Did you ever hear back from this person when you?
No, I've left multiple voicemails, I've sent a letter, and no, I've never heard anything. I'm actually kind of worried.
I was going to say, do we know that this person is okay? Huh. Okay. We'll follow. Yes, council vice mayor.
Are we gonna, do we have to do anything special to advertise? Just start advertising?
Okay.
That was it.
Okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Perhaps we could talk about just seeing if this person's moved, or if they're all right or alive, or send somebody by the house or something, so.
I need to amend what we just passed, because, so she, she serves, if you don't mind, she serves as both an alternate on the city B-PAC and on the county B-PAC, and Ms. Moody just pointed out that I didn't mention both in the motion.
Okay. So we just?
You can just do that by second motion.
Okay.
Yeah, because what we just did was the city's B-PAC, right?
No, county.
Oh, the county one. So the other way around. So now you need to remove the person as an alternate from the city's B-PAC.
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to move to, I'd like to move to remove Jamie Morris from the position of alternate on the city's B-PAC.
Second.
Motion, the second. Discussion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? There.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Any other new business or board reports? Okay, city manager.
I'd like to ask Mr. Tinch to come up. As the council is aware, for quite some time now, we have been working to address the issues of stormwater on East one hundred and twenty-seventh Avenue. We had a consultant put together an analysis of that particular situation and come up with a series of alternatives for staff to consider. Mr. Tinch and his team have reviewed those alternatives and are bringing forward recommendations to you this evening. If the council is amenable to the recommendation, we would ask that you, hopefully in the form of a motion, give us the direction that we would need, and then we would start the outreach and start to work to put together whatever proposals and contracts, et cetera, we need to bring back to make that happen. Mr. Tinch has a presentation, a short presentation.
It's my birthday, so I've made it the same number of years.
By the way, happy birthday.
You're a hundred and twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Wow.
Wow, that's not great.
Don't look over one twenty-five.
Exactly.
It always sings.
Well, good evening again, your honorable mayor, city council. I wanted to provide you with a brief project update for the East one hundred and twenty-seventh Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project. We've been, we've received several resident concerns regarding localized flooding within the area. So the area in general is the Pleasant Terrace neighborhood, so just north of us, it's, we're basically, one hundred and twenty-seventh Avenue terminates there into an unimproved area of right-of-way. And so city staff went out, we evaluated the area, we did some research, we looked at the drainage easement, we were able to find all the documentation we could regarding what that easement looks like, the legal descriptions and whatnot. We also looked at the stormwater lift station. We did have some concerns regarding the lift station itself, so we asked Kim Lee Horn to conduct a feasibility study on the lift station. Part of that study also included providing us with some alternatives for improvements to that stormwater area. So they did the feasibility study, a drawdown test, and some other things to make a determination if this station was actually functioning as designed. So at this point, now we've gone kind of into that next steps, and towards the end of the presentation, I'll provide you with our recommendation, and then we'll be looking to get your input and motion from that point on. So what we have here on the screen is a, what they call a heat map, and it's a topographic relief of the area. So the areas that are red are the highest areas within that region. So again, as you'll see, you have Fifty-Sixth Street to the east, Fifty Street to the west, Fowler Avenue on the south end, and Fletcher on the north. And what your, what your eyes kind of drawing you to is, as it goes from red to yellow to green to dark green, you're going down in elevation. So you have the high points kind of in the southern part of the area, and then you kind of see a funnel start to be created there around Fifty-Second Avenue and one hundred twenty-seventh Avenue, everything kind of leading down to the lowest point or that real dark green within that neighborhood. And that would be, for lack of a better term, the bowl. That's, that's the bottom, that's the low point of the neighborhood. So again, that's that location by that black square.
Yeah.
Give you a little better, better idea, zoom into that area a little closer. What we did is we overlaid the drainage easement, that's the hatched area, and there's roughly five properties that, about this easement, or have some effect on this easement. And what you're seeing here is, there's also a number of, look like topographic lines, and those are elevations. The green is what would be considered kind of a normal storm event, so maybe, say, two inches or so of rainfall over a twenty-four-hour period. The yellow is considered to be a five-year storm event, and that would be about five and a half inches over a twenty-four-hour period. The next color, which is the orange, that's a twenty-five-year storm event, about eight inches over twenty-four hours. And then finally, you have the red, which is a one-hundred-year storm event, or about eleven inches of rain over a twenty-four-hour period. Now, we realize that this model was conducted back in two thousand and seven as part of the Duck Pond study, and I'll talk about that in a little greater detail here in just a moment. So some of the information on there could be probably tweaked a little bit with some modern mapping with LiDAR and everything else that we have nowadays. But the long and short of it is, that system was really designed to kind of handle your average rainfall event. That's what it was built for, that's what the county worked on providing. So talk a little bit about work that's been done in the area. So the county back in eighty-four, and then again in ninety-four, looked at placing deed restrictions as well as drainage easements within this area. So they kind of defined that hatched area that I showed you earlier. In addition, in ninety-five, they went really one step further and built a stormwater lift station. So prior to ninety-five, that system had no outfall. It would just simply fill up with water, and then over time, it would drain out. So there's some sandy soils in that area, it would eventually drain down, and then, again, another rainfall would come and fill back up. And so it was very cyclic, but to try and help alleviate some of those flooding issues, they, they constructed this lift station in ninety-five. And the outfall for this lift station actually pushes the water north to a FDOT borrow pit within that same neighborhood, and dumps that water within that system. So after all that was said and done around two thousand and one, I think they actually annexed in the Pleasant Terrace neighborhood, and sometime in two thousand and four, the county dedicated the lift station, all the easements and appurtenances to the city of Temple Terrace. Again, I mentioned this earlier, some of the studies have been done within this area. The original study was a Duck Pond study, really kind of focused more on another location outside of the outside of the Pleasant Terrace neighborhood, but it did incorporate certain elements into it, that's, that's some of that topographic information we looked at earlier regarding water levels. In 2012, the City of Temple Terrace worked with King Engineering on developing a, kind of a evaluation of the area, provided some potential alternatives for things to do to improve that system. So we came along, looked a little bit at that study, again, worked for Kimley Horn, had them go in, look at the lift station, go through it in great detail, look through the permits, make a determination, okay, how's that system functioning today compared to how it functioned in 95? Is it meeting the, all the standards that are set forth in that permit? And what they found was, the system is a little bit lacking, the, the stormwater lift station over time has become a little less efficient, so it's only pumping at about 80% of the permitted, uh, maximum level of discharge that is... So, they made some determinations from that, they provided us with, again, four alternatives. I took those alternatives, I put them into a report, I provided that report to you as part of this presentation, uh, with our staff recommendations. So, alternative one, again, as I indicated, it would be to replace the new, the existing pumps with a new pump package. It would also require likely an upgrade of the pump, of the panel, the electrical panel to drive the new pumps, and there would be the installation process and contingencies. So, alternative one, the engineer's estimate for that effort would be about $500,000 to implement that. And what that would do is it would get the system back to what was previously permitted, and I, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about exceedance of that permit and what that potentially would look like, in, in just a minute. Alternative two, it speaks to the outfall structure itself, so the outfall structure that takes the water into the lift station, as well as the drainage easement, and what we would be proposing is to kind of optimize that outfall structure, right now, it's railroad ties, so we would put in a concrete structure, we would improve, optimize that kind of flow into the lift station, and then we would also look at restoring the drainage easement. So we would go in there, see if there's fill material that's been placed, likely, probably has over time, or other impediments, we would look to remove those impediments, restore that again back to that 95 standard. So, altern, alternative three, it gets a little more progressive, so this alternative would involve buying the properties, uh, within that area, so fairly significant outlay, and this is probably a conservative number of 2.5 million. You would also have the demo and excavation cost associated with that, and again, that was likely a conservative number of 250,000. And then any additional options that may apply, that maybe we aren't seeing at this moment, uh, say, we wanted to upgrade again the outfall or do some other things, fence it or kind of beautify it a bit, so this alternative would be looking at about 2.7 to almost $3 million to implement. The final alternative that we have is alternative four, and this is the most progressive of all. What this entails is the construction of a completely new lift station, uh, would also require us to construct a new force main, and we would move the outfall for the force main from the existing borrow pit the DOT owns to the large wetland system that's located north of Fletcher Avenue. So if you guys have ever looked at a map, that's a USF property, it's a massive expansive of a wetland. So it would be looking to increase that in size and also distance. And then, of course, it would also require some property acquisition, likely three properties. So this alternative comes in at $5 million, so obviously, by far the most expensive, and again, the most aggressive of, of those. So staff really dug deep into these alternatives, we looked at what we thought would be the most cost-effective, um, and also keeping in mind that there's some other elements that we would need to stay within. So, you can't necessarily go in and pit a much larger pump and increase flow rates out of the system because you could create tailwater issues, if the receiving body, it could create a flooding scenario, then it's likely that that would not be permitted. So what we're proposing to do is, is select alternatives one and two, and that would include, again, putting in that new pump package, getting that system back to the previous design standards, make sure we're meeting those standards. Right now, the system's pumping about 1,800 gallons per minute, and it's permitted at 2,250, so you've got almost 500 gallons per minute there that we could look at potentially increasing that system to, to meet that standard, so it'd help pump down that system a little bit faster. So that would be the, uh, the preferred alternative there. In addition, again, the electrical panel would have to be replaced if we had to upsize the pump slightly. The outfall structure would be rebuilt, putting in that nice concrete structure, and again, the, uh, going back through that existing floodplain, making sure it's clear of impediments, clear of fill material, restoring it back to what it was in 95. Again, we did not, are not proposing alternatives three and four, and again, I touch back on this permitting issue, if we were to go in and pin in a much larger pump or put in a new outfall system into a different wetland area, it may be highly likely, highly likely, that that would not be permitted by the regulatory agencies. Uh, we had a conversation with a well-seasoned drainage engineer, and their comment was, you, you would probably be lucky to permit the system as it exists today, let alone try to upgrade the system. It would be highly likely that that would not even pass, let alone, again, today's system, which would also likely not pass, the mustard of current standards. So, their kind of recommendation was, you've got a permit in hand, as long as you don't exceed that permit, you're okay. The recommendation was to kind of stick with the system as it, it was designed. So, we also looked at both alternatives, and they require taking, uh, purchase of property that works out okay if everyone's willing, if you get some parties that aren't, now you're looking at potential take that could really bog this project down and become a real nightmare. So that's something that needs to be kept in mind. And then finally, we just didn't see the cost benefit. You know, you're talking about spending three to $5 million to fix a small area of flooding that affects three or four homes, five at most. So, we, we just felt like the, uh, the cost benefit was just not there. So that said, that really kind of wraps things up, I'm willing to stand for any questions. Again, as Carlos mentioned, what we're kind of looking for is, we're, again, proposing alternatives one and two, and we would like some direction from Council if they think that is an appropriate approach, and then we'll move forward from there. If you guys want to look at other alternatives, that's certainly something we're willing to do as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch, and I do have some questions, I'm sure my colleagues may too, but I do want to give the public an opportunity to comment if they'd like, or there are members of the public who wish to comment on this. Okay, I have a couple of quick questions. Having been out there several times and seen this, um, in real life, when you talk, what would you do, the structure that's in the bottom of the bowl, or close to the bottom of the bowl, that's, that's constructed out of railroad ties, and it's kind of lacking, it's really not even, doesn't even really look safe.
Yeah, it's not really meeting the standard for what you would see of traditional inlets.
Would this rebuild that structure?
Yes, alternative two would be to rebuild that structure, and again, restore that floodplain.
Okay, so that's question one. Question two is, what work, if any, would be done at the outfall up in the pond?
We wouldn't necessarily, uh, propose any work now, while we go through the design element, there's some minor tweaking that can be done to the outfall without having, getting too involved with that borrow pit, because that's owned by DOT. I think we need to be cautious about what we do up in that region, because I think there could be some concern that it, it could really tick us into a whole nother realm of work.
No, but without increasing capacity in the pond, because the surrounding neighbors to that pond are, they flood also, there's, some of those properties have sandbags up around the pond to keep from being flooded now.
Right.
So they really don't have the ability to add water, but is the outfall pipe itself, is that clear of obstruction so that water can flow free?
Uh, yeah, when I went out and looked at it last, I thought it was, I know the city engineers spoke about maybe doing some things to slightly modify that to allow it to flow out a little bit better, and again, I think those are things we would flesh out during the design process, and I also wanted to touch on something that you just mentioned, which is, we're not proposing to pit more water into that system, it would just go in at a quicker rate.
Faster.
Right. The, the same amount of water that's permitted is going to enter that system, it just may enter it, it in two hours versus three or four.
Well, and that's key too, because the, some of the neighbors that I've talked to out there about this issue have commented about the system, fundamentally, the system works, it just can't keep up with the, the, it's the speed of it.
That's correct.
And, um...
And you're absolutely correct, uh, Mr. Mayor, that as that system gets that huge slug of water, it overwhelms it, but then eventually, it draws it back down, you just have that window of time where it stacks up before it can get out of the system, so if we can get that system back online and get it back to those permitted, uh, rates of flow, I think it will kind of help hopefully knock some of the top off that curve.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to mention that I'm not, I didn't hear you say it unless I missed it, which could be, but, um, just for the public, this is all ARPA funds.
Yes, that is correct.
This is not city funds, this is the money received from the federal government to do public projects, stormwater enhancements, these kind of things, so this is not, it's tax money, because it's federal money, still our tax money, but it's not city money.
Correct, it is one of the ARPA projects I spoke about earlier.
Okay, Councilmember questions? Yes, Councilmember sister?
To, and I'm about to belabor the point, but we're talking, you were talking about the sandbags around, is that the secondary structure or the primary?
The outfall pond of the DOT borrow pit.
Okay, all right, so if we're throwing more water in there faster...
Well, it's not more, it's just faster.
It's not more, but it's faster.
Yeah.
Or is it that going to exacerbate the flood, potential flooding at those houses? Unless, and then again, I don't understand where that outflow goes beyond that, does that have a separate, does the secondary pond have another outlet?
No.
If you throw more water, if you throw water in faster...
Right.
It's gonna build, it's gonna rise higher, unless it's got a safety valve.
Well, it's gonna rise quicker, but it's still the same volume at the end of the day. Does that make sense?
No.
So, okay, so you can pour water into a glass slowly, and it will go all the way to the top, or you can dump it all at once, and it goes right to the top, it doesn't, there's still not more water going.
All right, okay, I see your premise, I see the premise, okay, all right.
Same amount of water, just gets it quicker.
Just gets it quicker, okay. Uh, my other question, the other, other question I have is, was this on the original ARPA list, or I thought we pushed all that ARPA list to the, to the, to the building?
No, no, this was one of the original projects, even before the, uh, the...
Okay.
Service center came online.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, in fact, this is, I think, the top project.
It was.
Okay.
Other questions, Councilmembers?
Do we need a motion?
We do, and if you want to adopt the resident, or adopt the recommendations, it would be to complete recommendation one and two.
Okay, I would move that, uh, we, that, uh, Council instruct staff to, uh, work on option one, alternative one and two concurrently, to alleviate the stormwater issues as best they can on 127th Street, or 127th Avenue Stormwater Project.
A second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays, thank you very much, Mr. Tinch.
Thank you, we will be back in short order with the design.
You have to leave, or you need a break?
No, no, I have to leave.
Oh, you have to leave.
That's why I have to leave.
Okay, well, all we have left is the financial report, which we can provide you with a hard copy of that, I'm sure.
I have it.
Yeah, and, um, good night.
I'm trying to leave quietly.
Okay. Well, that went out the window. Mr. Bia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, as you mentioned, in the backup, you'll, you have the, we have three reports, actually, you have the report, the quarter, third quarter updates on the Council's fiscal year priorities, uh, second one on the, uh, third quarter city departmental goals update, as well as the actual versus budget financial statements. Happy to take any questions you might have regarding those.
Very good. Councilmembers, questions? Just for the public's edification, we're not gonna, I don't think there's any public left, but, um, there are people watching on television, just for your edification, this is a fairly lengthy report, multiple pages of what our annual spending should be to this point in the fiscal year and what it is, and also the established goals for the various departments and where they are in progress towards those goals. Documents available for anybody who is interested, but, um, we normally don't read that lengthy thing, so if you wonder what we're talking about, that's the document. Very good.
I do have one, one third item. So, uh, as the Council is aware, and so just for the public certification, uh, several months ago, the, the Council directed the city to reach out to Hart, and actually, the mayor submitted a letter on the Council's behalf, uh, requesting the, um, start negotiations, if you will, to purchase the property that's located across the street from City Hall. Hart owns three quarters of that parking lot on the other side of 113th. The, uh, Hart has responded, yesterday they sent a letter, uh, to our office, which I forwarded to the Council, and in that letter, they, uh, basically are declining, politely declining, the city's request to purchase the property. They did indicate, uh, well, they're declining it using the contention that they will continue to utilize this property for business purposes, and they want to maintain their intent to utilize this property as originally intended, there's a lot of intents in that sentence. They're saying that because the agreement that we have with Hart indicates that they have to continue to use it as a parking ride, otherwise the city would have a right of first refusal. Uh, I've been here a little under a year, I've never seen it used as a parking ride, I understand it hasn't been for quite some time, and in fact, there is no bus stop on that property. I would also, for the public to know, and the Council is aware of this, the city maintains that property, we maintain all the, not that there's not a lot of lawn, but we maintain the landscaping, shrubs, we blow it out, trees, et cetera. Uh, we, we did not put the paving in, we did not stripe it, that's, that's obviously something that I believe Hart did, but, uh, and it's not used for Hart at all, there's never a Hart vehicle parked there that I'm, that I'm aware of, so, um, bring it to your attention this evening in case you would like to direct us to follow up with Hart. They did indicate that they are very much, quote, "very much interested in discussing a lease agreement with the city to effectuate our plans." Uh, I have responded to the person that sent this to ask what they're considering in terms of a lease agreement, uh, because I've told them that what we'd like to do, to use the property for, if the Council wishes, is potentially build a police station, or part of a City Hall campus is part of a police station, and I don't really see how a lease agreement would work in that instance, um, unless it was like a 100-year agreement, even that, it would be kind of productive to what Hart wants to do, so, uh, that's, that's the purpose of including it this evening.
Yes, Councilmembers?
Having heard this just yesterday, um, haven't had, have not, have not had an opportunity to bring this up to the Board, but we have a Hart Board meeting on Monday, and unless Council directs me to do, otherwise, I'm gonna bring this up and say, what the heck, you know, it's, this is, uh, this is not property that Hart's using, obviously, they have it, parking ride went away when, back when they did Mission Max three or, five years ago, six years ago, so how can there have any business intent of it? So unless, unless Ca, uh, Council would rather me not do that, that's my plan on Monday morning at nine o'clock.
I, I'm fine with that personally, in fact, I was gonna ask you if there's a public comment, or it's probably too late for me to get on their agenda, but I'll, I don't know if it'd make any difference in you bringing it up, but I would attend their meeting and...
Well, I plan on, I plan on doing it at, uh, you know, Council, uh, Board Business.
Okay.
So it'll be, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be just part of the record, and go, go, go from there, that's my plan, is to bring that up on Monday at the Board Meeting.
Okay, I don't see any downside to that, do you?
No.
I, I would, in addition to that, I, I'd like to ask our city attorney to take another look at this agreement, um, and read this thing carefully, and tell us if we've got a legal case, because I want to sue them.
Yeah.
Oh, we need this property, and they're just speculating at this point, they have not used that property in 20 years or more, and it's not costing them a thing, and we're maintaining it, they don't use it, the agreement is clear as day, and I've looked at all of their planning documents, and now, they're lengthy, maybe I've missed something that's embedded in a cell and on Excel spreadsheet, but I don't see any proposed projects... But I don't see any proposed projects in their planning documents to activate this property and use it for a future parking ride. I don't see anything. I've looked, I spent hours looking through their planning documents, looking for this, and I don't see anything.
There's nothing, there isn't any.
So they're going to make up that they're just planning on using this at some point in the future. And keep in mind that we invested in it. We have money in this property, in this, we contributed to this purchase of this property for the purpose of it being a parking ride. Well, it's not. And so...
So we can get that, your report, at our next meeting?
Absolutely.
So I would, yeah, talk to them, but I want to sue them.
I plan to bring that up the board business.
Yeah, I don't, this is, anyway.
Just wrong.
I don't want to sue them unless we can win. But yeah, I mean, even suing forces them to the table, too. It's like, what are you going to do, councilmember?
So it's, it sounds like Councilmember Schuster's going to bring it up at the board meeting. And we've asked city attorney to look over the contract again. Do we need to make any communication further from the city manager at this point? Or do we want to wait until we hear what happens at the board meeting?
Meeting or happened before. Well, it's Monday, so it may not be. It's up to, it's up to you guys. I don't, I don't, I don't see any need for it at this point, but...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't see any either.
The letter said that they, they continue to use it for business purposes, making it appear that they are currently using it for business purposes. You might want to ask them, what business purpose are they using it for? And I checked the Hillsborough County property appraiser's records. And although I would think that they would have to get perhaps a permit from us to do something there, it looks like the, there hasn't been an improvement made there since like, I think, 2007, 2009. They paved it, they put a fence around it, that was it, so.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
Yeah, if you can report to...
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll report back to city manager at the very least on Monday, after, Monday after the meeting.
Mr. Bia, you still have the floor.
That's all I have, thank you.
City attorney?
I have a lien reduction report tonight on the property at 1701 East Cayuga Street. Oh, excuse me, wrong, wrong. 11102 North 61st Street, sorry. This, this started off with work being done to either build an enclosure around a patio. The work seemed to have been started by the husband. Then there was a divorce and left the wife there trying to deal with the construction. As it turned, the husband had started it without a permit. It was flagged then and eventually had gone to the code board. At some point, the city's engineer, or excuse me, I believe our building official said that the owner needed to get an engineer's report, which she did. She had a contractor, she thought. And the contractor apparently dropped the ball. The code board had given her 30 days. She was relying on the contractor. The contractor, as I said, did not do what he needed to do. And that put her beyond the 30 days. The lien started to run. The total of the lien was $750. And we have agreed to a lien reduction of $310. That included the settlement amount of $150 and city's costs of $160 for the total of 310. So our costs were recovered, and it's been paid.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions on that?
That's it.
That's it. Mr. Bia, anything else? Councilmembers, anything else? Directors, anything else? Public, there's no public here. Anything else? Thank you for your patience. I know it's been a long meeting. I appreciate your, all your work, so thank you. And we'll be adjourned.